Start with an opening prayer and reading of our C S A G. At this time, please rise.
I intahti yatachi wakanda, amitsiko mina, kambale washtapi chule. Diada wajadi le niçapi le mineral council okistama le. Okistama le, le konseha da wakanda, wakandajinki majadi tala mineral state majaji. All your folks, Father, it's a, it go, Father, it tahty, it tahty hina, hinaji. It tahty ji, da diada wakama, wa nade, bijiwa, wa nade. Thank you, Father, for this beautiful day. Thank you for this season as you grant us all of this gratitude, bestowments. That you bless, that you bless us, Father, with all, that you're very gracious with us, Father. Thank you for all that you give and back to us, Father. Bless those that bereaved this hour, Father, Mary that drank her father, lost her father, and it tahty. You are a shrink today to bless her, bless her over the mournful, as Jesus taught us, Father. Thank you for this day, Daddy, bless your home, Father, your children, your relatives, all their friends, Father. Bless all those, or the rest of us that have bereaved this hour, Big Horse family, Father. Colin say, bless them, Father, Kenny and his family, Father, his older brothers, his younger brothers, Father. His, his children, Father, his son, nephews, all his nieces and nephews, Father. Bless them to the bottom of their hearts because their hearts are heavy, Father. All these sanctiests in Jesus' name, ye o gashanam wakandajinki. Thank you for all you give and back to us, Father. Ye o gashanam wakandajinki, ekebe shayda weina, wakandajinki, amen.
Please receive the greeting of our C S A.
This is C S A, January twenty twenty three. Sandra K. Bradman, August thirty first, twenty twenty three, also Oklahoma. Probably big, probably two big horse, August twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, Ohio, Oklahoma. Frank D. Tarian, September second, twenty twenty three, Telequado, Oklahoma. Danny D. McGinnis, August fifteenth, twenty twenty three, Kawita, Oklahoma. Constance L. Davis, August fourth, twenty twenty three, Stillwater, Oklahoma. Janice M. Moody, July eighth, twenty twenty three, Vincenses, Indiana. Sally A. Rosales, January twenty seven, twenty twenty three, Treeport, Louisiana. Maurice E. Keith, September thirteenth, Broken Arrow, Oklahoma. Dr. Joe Cooper, Joe, Bill Cooper, Connor. Dr. Joe Connor, September twelfth, twenty twenty three, Paso, Fairfax, Oklahoma. Marla K. Woodford, Woodard, September third, twenty twenty three, Broken Arrow, Oklahoma. Jean Dwight Bigso, the third, September seventeen, twenty twenty three, Ochopoli, Ohio, Oklahoma. James W. Irwin, February fifteen, twenty twenty three, unknown. And Martin, our friend, August twenty ninth, twenty twenty three, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. Yeah, fine, and rather interesting to hear.
Thank you, Second Chair, Red Eagle. Our hearts and prayers go out to these families, brothers that here. Know that the day is, is here, that they go on. And our people always say that be happy when they go to our Lord and Creator. And it's hard, I've been there, handled that. And I just want to ask the Lord and his families to know our prayers are with you for the struggle of the night, the struggle in the morning. Let, let them have that blessing that knows that you are all powerful, Your Lord. You take care of us wherever we are at, and we are never in darkness. With that, I'd like a roll call, please.
Councilman Big Horse?
Here.
Thank you, brother.
Councilman Chishewala? Councilman Chishewala? Councilwoman Curry?
Here.
Councilman Redcorn?
Here.
Second Chair, Red Eagle?
Here.
Councilman Rebar?
Present.
Councilman Shaffelford? Councilman Shaffelford? Chairman Waller?
Present.
We have a call.
And thank you. With that, I'd like to go into item number four in the agenda. A special day, we have a special guest with us. Yes, Counsel?
If I may, could I ask that we move Executive to after all business?
Yes, sir. You will handle the D E D C grant, I will handle the item nine B.
Before Executive is out there?
Thank you, sir. Is there any other? Yes, ma'am.
We don't have anything in Executive.
That was correct, I did want one comment, we'll get to that later. At this time, I don't show anything in Executive. With that being said, is there any other adjustment that I need to make in the agenda?
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Tom Thraw has a bond that you've been asking about to hand over to the other agents this time.
Yes, sir, because that will fall under their review. Yes, Counsel. It's on the agenda items, we're just taking it as housekeeping. We also have a... I don't see any other item at this time. With that, I'd like to go on into the superintendent's report. Mr. Kamikanda, as our Deputy Superintendent. And we have a very special guest with us today. Would you please do a proper introduction?
I would be happy to. With us today, we have Adam Trumbly. He is our new permanent superintendent of the O S A G Agency. Yes, welcome. He came aboard last Tuesday, was his first day. Not being a federal employee, we are working on computer accesses. I think we're finally there, so going to get him on board and going to just throw him right in there.
Thank you.
So.
I would also like to mention that he's one of us.
Yes, he is.
Our C S A should see him. I think that needs to be recognized today. When we can have the power here in these chairs, that's what takes care of our people. But the most important part is we're making decisions for our children. And with that being said, it's honored to have you here today, representing your family, representing yourself, and representing us. We know that you're going to have a position that I wanted her to say that one word, and that's our superintendent. And I wish you the best, and I want to tell you is that you're probably my eleventh superintendent, and I want you to be the best one. And with that, all the blessings and guidance, if there's anything we can do for it, just contact us. And before you got here, I want to thank you, Kami, for all that you have done, the effort that you and Lacy work with to keep me from having to do it. I know it's done right, and I want to make that as an example of how we're going to operate with your department. Anything else? Please go into your report.
So the superintendent's report for today is as follows. Oil, gas, and water royalty for August twenty twenty three production. The total oil produced was three hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine point seventy-four barrels. Royalties paid were three million, seven hundred and ninety-two thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and one penny. The total gas produced was a hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-three M C F. The royalties paid were fifty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-four cents. Total gas liquids produced was a hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty gallons. Royalties paid were sixteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. Total tank bottoms were forty-eight point sixty-eight barrels, and the royalties paid were a hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-seven cents. The water usage royalty paid was a hundred dollars, and the waste disposal royalty paid was eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-two cents. Rentals and bonus, oil and gas rentals paid were three thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. Oil and gas bonus paid was ten thousand, eight hundred dollars. Rentals, nine hundred dollars, saltwater easement rentals were fifteen hundred dollars, and late payment charges were two thousand, eleven dollars and twenty cents. The other minerals, A P A C, produced thirty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven point eighty-two tons and paid forty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-four cents in royalty. Candy Creek, Burbank Materials, and Wilson Ranch all produced zero and paid zero. Rocky Banks produced a hundred and fifty-six cubic yards and paid a hundred and thirty in royalty. Schmidt Brothers produced two hundred and eighty-eight cubic yards and paid two hundred and sixteen dollars in royalty. Sherwood Construction produced zero and paid zero. And those are the ones I've mentioned before that I'm working on meeting them off the books. I'm just waiting for the lease inspections. The producing well count total is eighteen thousand, eighty-two, of which oil, the thirteen thousand, three hundred and nineteen are oil, one thousand, one hundred and forty-four are gas, sixty-two are oil and gas, three hundred and twenty-seven are C B M or coalbed methane, and three thousand, two hundred and thirty are saltwater disposals or water injection wells. Approved permits, there were three workover permits, a plugging, one emergency plugging, one emergency workover, and zero drilling permits. And then there were no new drilling completions reported. That completes my report.
Counsel, do we have any questions at this time?
Thank you, Chairman. I, I, I met Mr. Trumbly before the meeting started, and I want to officially recognize you as our new superintendent and welcome you to this new position. And look forward to working with you because our relationship with the O S A G Agency office is really kind of critical to, to the numbers that are reflected on these reports. It's a, it's an important position that you hold, and we recognize that. With regard to the report, Kami, I just wanted to read out loud. When I first received this report by email, I just did a little bit of math calculations just to put these numbers in perspective for those people that might be listening in, and, you know, and for our own use. That, first of all, I want to thank you for breaking out these different oil wells versus gas wells in, in the various categories. I also appreciate you, I noticed when we received the report that you had included in your report now what we requested, which was a schedule of all the pending drilling permits or the approvals.
Yes.
And when they were permitted, when they expire. There's, I noticed there's fifty-five wells, drilling permits that are actively approved. Some of them will start dropping off here in the next few months, but it's a list of them, a list of all the permits with the, the name of the operator that applies. So it'll show the activity, which ones actually got drilled and which ones, which was important for us to know, I thought. And I appreciate you including that in the report. But back to my original statement. The oil produced for the month of August is three hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine barrels. That is equivalent to, if you divide the oil wells that's provided in the report, to thirteen thousand, three hundred and nineteen. That's ten thousand, one hundred and thirty-four barrels per day. It's also an average of point seven six. Three, basically three quarters of a barrel a day of oil production per well. So just to put things in perspective. Gas is sadly five thousand, three hundred and sixty-five M C F, or what we call five point three million a day, which divided by the amount of gas wells of one thousand, one forty-four on the report, is only four point seven M C F per well average. So it's not very much gas. It's, it's almost not a commercial amount of gas per well. So that's concerning. So I just wanted to share that. And then the, I had a question about the late payment charge, the two thousand dollars of late payment charges. What, what is done with that money? Does that, does that go into the O S A G Agency's general funds that you operate with? Or is that distributed to us, or those penalties given to our headright owners?
The late payment charge that's reported on this report goes to the mineral estate. So those are monies that go into the mineral state and then distributed.
And are these late charges late-making royalty payments?
Yes.
And they're not fines and?
No.
Late fees for?
No.
For the producer being late filing their production reports?
No, these are the late, the late payments on minimum royalty.
Okay, okay. And then finally, Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Regarding the lease sale that's scheduled for the summer at the end of this month. Is there any nominations for that sale?
Not to this day, there's not.
And then if we don't have any nominations, I guess we will just waive the sale. You got it?
It's one of the options, sir.
One of the options. Okay, that's all I had, Chairman.
Second, thank you, Counsel, Second Chair.
Thank you, Chairman. When's the cutoff date for nominations, Kami?
The twenty-fifth is the cutoff date, but I, I usually allow for a few days. I think the twenty-fifth is next, is that next, not next Tuesday, or is that?
Thursday, Friday, Sunday.
Next Wednesday?
Which day?
Okay, so I've had it in my mind and I forgot. So usually I will give it till the end of that week or the beginning of the next week, just to make sure that nothing comes in postmarked the twenty-fifth. And then if I don't receive anything by that date, I was going to notify Lacy that I hadn't received any nominations just to get guidance from what you guys want to do.
Yes, I want to comment. I've been keeping track of the production too, what, what it was the month before and what it is now. And there's a hundred and twelve barrels more than was last month, of the preceding month. So we're gaining a little bit. Hopefully with new, new drilling, it'll, it'll pick up. And I think the price is probably going to stay where it is for a while, you know, because of the oil. You know, we can't judge about the price, you know. But former Chairman Yates, you know, passed on. I asked him one time about the price of oil, and he said, Myron, you can't tell what it's going to be. He was right. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Second Chair. Is there any questions in front of our report? Hearing none, thank you very much. We, we'll be waiting on the update. When would you actually have the numbers on the Burbank and Wilson and show, is that forthcoming?
Yes, they, like I've said before, and if they're, they always have production. It's just if their payment doesn't come in and post to the account within that month, I don't report it. Just because it won't match the numbers that are on the back.
Yes.
But so sometimes what'll happen is like next month, you may see like a really big production in royalty payments. It may include two months. Just sometimes with the way the snail mail works, you just don't know when that payment's going to hit. So sometimes it's right before the end of the month, and then sometimes it's right after the beginning of the month. And that's kind of what has happened with some of these, they came in like right at the cutoff time. So they do have production, it's just not going to be on this report.
Yes, ma'am, but I just wanted on the record is that that will be brought into the next payment cycle and identified at that time. So they know that everything that is covered into these, the month will even include that. I notice that being from the branch of minerals, that every once in a while you run into that. So, so it is identified into the next deposit for the P L account.
Okay, sure. Thank you, Chairman. In that regard, so next month, there's a high likelihood that that number from Burbank will be exceptionally high?
Yes, it definitely.
Will you be making a asterisk and a comment, a footnote to that?
Well, I actually just made a note on my report for next month to if there is, it covers more than one month to let you know, like what it's for.
Okay, so, thank you. The likewise with our oil production. Sometimes our oil production will have a situation where a payment came in later. Could we do something similar on it? So that when we see like August, our oil production three hundred and fourteen thousand barrels, if that included some extras from the month before that didn't get, could?
And I think we've talked about that before where I don't have all of those reports in front of me that Pam provides that there is, when she breaks out the oil production and the payment, she will put what month it is for. So you just kind of have to look at her, her end of the month to get, to get, it's going to break out each payment, which one is for what month.
So we have the data, it's just not on the, on the summary page?
Right.
Okay, I got you. Thank you. That's all I had, Chairman.
I did just want to ask Myron, on this Mr. Thrawls? Is he looking at having his bond released, or what?
I believe he wants it redeemed, but I asked him yesterday, did he represent a production of oil? He said he did, he said he did. He said that makes a difference, I guess that makes a difference on whether it's redeemable or not. He did represent an oil.
Okay, I'll see what I can find through the name that's here. And if I don't have any luck, I may email you for a phone number or some contact information for him to figure out what lease it is.
Sounds good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counsel. Notation, and my Councilman Shaffelford is here, thank you, sir. We have Councilwoman Curry with us, so we, the only one will be absent will be Councilor Chishew. Thank you. With that being said, thank you very much. We, we appreciate all of us coming in our way. We're going to need some help from your office. And as you well know, we'll be working with the regulatory items. I think the council itself needs to look at. We're getting ready to do a couple of items, and we're going to need your help. And some of it's going to be is what does our federal trustee feel about the state of Oklahoma? And them pushing their way into our reservation with the answer is no. Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
With that, I'd like to go on down the agenda. We want to have Mrs. Garringer come up. We can really try to find. My dear, please join me.
Okay, thank you, here I am. Councilmembers for allowing me to be here today. My name again is Troy Garringer, the fiduciary trust officer for our local office here at O S A G. Today, I don't have much to report on. We're getting ready for payments. We're making sure that we have all of our individuals that are on voluntary hold. We've been checking with them and making sure that we have all of the accounts updated with pertinent address and direct deposit information. The other thing that is new, again, I talked about it last week, and I think I sent out an email to Lacy, but the challenge on the quarterly statements has gone out. And that will go out for the first time on the statements that ended nine thirty. So those quarterly statements will have that appeal language for twenty-five C F R part two on those statements. So if any beneficiaries have questions regarding those, they can call us and we can assist them. But our local number here at the agency is nine one eight, two eight seven, five seven nine one. So that's something new that they'll be seeing. So we'll be happy to assist in that regard.
Thank you, ma'am. Second Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Troy, here, well, here just recently, Kenny, Big Horse's brother, he's, he's on the O S A G Agency Congress account with the, with the headright senate. They took it to our, the O S A G Nation Congress, and it passed. And it's going over to the nation treasury, and we have access to it. You were the first one to, you know, investigate it and commend you for it, thank you, thank you for that. So it belongs in our, on our side of it. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel, do we have any other questions? My dear, do you have any other comments?
No, sir.
We appreciate that, also getting out that report to our shareholder, because I swear they can always review that item. But the, also being able to call you at any time they have a question, I think that's very comforting for, for me and the others. But I haven't received a lot of calls this month, but I am going to say that if they do come.
Many, many.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, I'd like to move on down to our treasury report. Is this the same report that we received at the last council meeting, or adjustments?
It says Tyler's tied up in meetings, but he wanted you to know that this is updated information that he presented on the last meeting, as we have not reached the end of it.
Do we have any questions on it? It's for the council to review, and this is the latest numbers in front of you. Without hearing any questions, I'd like to go on down to the new business. We are looking at the biannual meeting date. We had looked at some dates before, or am I getting that with the consultation?
Yes.
Yeah, you'll have to help me on that.
I would say it was December.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, December fifth, sixth, or seventh, we need to choose eight, eight.
Chairman, please, Counsel, Councilman Redcorn.
I'm open five and six, I prefer six, December sixth.
The motion?
We are needing it in motion, aren't we?
I have a motion, we have it on the sixth of December.
I need a second, please, there's a second. I have a motion on floor of Councilman Redcorn, Secretary of my Second Chair, Red Eagle, to have our biannual meeting date on December the sixth, twenty twenty three. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's call for the question.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Councilwoman Curry? Councilwoman Curry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair, Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Shaffelford?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are we specifying the date or its location here in the chambers? Yes. Just give me just a second. Thank you. With that, I'd like to move on down the agenda. We, I do not have anything that I need to take to executive councils or anything at this time. Hearing none, I'd like to move on down the agenda with your permission to go into the D E D C grant. Councilman Redcorn.
Thank you, Chairman. Basically, I just kind of called for this topic. I didn't know it would be assigned to me, I know Mr. Shaffelford's handling all this. So didn't want to jump the gun there, but I want to make sure I understood kind of where we are with this. So if it's okay, if I can pass it on to?
Yes.
Sure.
Counsel, my check.
Thank you. This is kind of like the guess that keeps on giving. Upon doing the research on this grant, I found that there was, there was some, I think once you get past the executive summary part of it, which seemed to have raised a lot of concern within this body. I think that there's probably, just like anything else, I mean, if you can shape and form the grant, and I hesitate to say change the scope, because I work with grants. And once you've identified, it's like, like, it's like applying for plugging money. Then once you get it, you want to do something else with it, you know, I mean. Yeah, there's, there's some wiggle room from time to time, it just depends on who the funding agency is and what their original intent is with the money. Not having the ability or having had the opportunity to, to really work on this, to work with the funding agencies, if we could change the scope up somewhat to where it's more acceptable to this body, you know, to the approval and understanding of the shareholders, because some, it's kind of like the O six act sometimes. I mean, you get some people look at it a certain way, and some people look at it another way, and oftentimes it can be complicated. And so, again, having read this thing, this executive summary, and the grant application itself, you know, eight or ten times, just so I can soak it in, I said, I could see some benefit on some of the areas where it works, talks about codes and certain things like that. Maybe the possibility of, of the minerals council going into some kind of a former fashion of, on the production side of things. You know, whether it's working with the nation, do an L L C, or another producer, or doing it on our own. What are we going to do? Takes me back to where we were talking about the, remember we were working with the, I guess at the O S A G one, or Saint John's Skimmin. This is not the first time we've crossed, you know, crossed that valley. And I think this would possibly have given us. And I think this would possibly have given us some opportunities to lay a foundation to, to look at, start doing things like. And again, when we first talked about this a couple of months ago, I said, you know, go through the motions, set things up. Even if you don't do it, then you got things, you've got deliverables there that you could use moving forward. If it's not this body, then maybe the next council, you know, maybe they'll see things differently. But at the same time, it didn't seem to be something that, having talked with all of you at one time or another on this, it didn't seem like anybody was really too comfortable with accepting this. I've spoken with several members of the Congress, and I believe the chief mentioned this. If we so desire to move forward on something similar to this in the future, not necessarily using this money, but Congress might be willing to fund our endeavors to try to do some things like that for the further development of the minerals estate itself. That, that's good, you know, because oftentimes you're working with grants, sometimes your hands are tied. Can't say it, you need to say that. But when you work with tribal money and you've identified what you're going to do with it, then sometimes you have to kind of change course. They're, they're not in the standards, and though you can't do that, it's not what you originally applied for that money for. So again, it gives us some more flexibility if we use tribal money, disappear. We're just going to go to the funding agency. You got a time clock that's ticking, you know, I understand the chief and the candidates' stance. You know, they don't want to get this, I mean, this thing should have been off the ground a couple of months ago. We attempted to do some things with some meetings and stuff. It didn't work out. So I believe right now the chief in his office, I think they're willing to take this on and do what they feel like they need to do with it. And that's, that's, I just wanted to express to the council, you know, I, I seen some, I seen some areas in there that I thought may be helpful. But at the same time, if we don't use this grant, we got tribal funds that we might be able to access to start doing some groundwork, like moving forward to maybe looking at some production type issues through us. And that's what help on the bottom end, you know, I mean, it's not like there's thousands of wells, hundreds of wells, or tens of wells. There's a lot of wells being drilled out there, so we have to look in different ways on how to bring money in, whether it's CO2, whether it's, you know, drilling wells, access to drill reports, you know, production records, all that stuff that we talked about. You know, I've been in here, and then the wells have changed, haven't really turned a whole lot. I've seen this opportunity to start looking at different avenues and approaching some things where we can start looking at, trying to develop this mineral state in from a different direction in some areas, but not, not disruptive to where it causes friction with the nineteen oh six act. And all those things like it, we all understand all that stuff. So again, I don't have any problem with sending this back. Of course, it's the nation's, not ours, it's the nation's. And so if we're not going to use it, then they need to take over and use it how they want to do it. But of course, whenever there's things that they're doing with the money that crosses over into minerals itself, I believe that these come in front of us and for our, looking at our review, our vetting process, our approvals, disapprovals. And I think that, I think that will be fine. So that's about all I have on that. Thank you.
Counselman.
Thank you, Chairman. This grant was applied for by OCSH Mineral Council Four. The OCSH Mineral Council Four was misled as to the purpose of the grant. The grant was approved. The Mineral Council Four thought this grant was for the Mineral Council to develop its own rules and regulations in addition to the federal government's code of federal regulations. And that never happened. This OCSH Mineral Council Five has not had one meeting to discuss this grant. Now, one, we appointed or authorized Councilwoman Curry and Councilman Shaffler to digest it and come back to the council and explain it to us, what the grant is, so that we know what happened. And we haven't had that meeting yet. So the Mineral Council Four is not, or Five is not being briefed on what the grant is or isn't. And I do know from being on OCSH Mineral Council Four, it is not represented on what we thought we were voting on from OCSH Mineral Council Four. And if anybody's going to... Yeah, I would be against the nation pursuing the grant, the liberals, the scope of the grant. Because I, for one, wouldn't want that grant, I wouldn't want those, the scope acted upon as, as it's written. And if we're going to change the scope, or if, if, if somebody's going to change the scope from what it is, I think it should be us, and we can change it to benefit our desires and our wishes, something similar. Or exchange it, I don't know the, the formality of the grant. When we say it's the nation's money, well, really, it's the United States taxpayers' money. It came from the federal government, the United States federal government. And if we're going to change it, I'd like to, to change it, to utilize it for some endeavor that the Mineral Council would deem appropriate to spend it on. Councilman Redcorn, throughout a subject matter that is, that I find very exciting, the, to research the feasibility of lithium development and production through our produced saltwater and maybe other means, or not just lithium, but all other potential rare earth elements that we know are contained in our saltwater and maybe our other deposits. So if we're going to, if we're going to do anything with this grant funds, I'd like to re-scope it to do something that we'd like to do. And with that, that's all I have to say. Thank you, Chairman.
Councilman Redcorn.
Thank you, Chairman.
Second chair.
In Mineral, I, being a member of Mineral Council Four, several of us were there. We were really active in trying to look at the scope of developing ourselves. M I three came along and their desire to kind of rewrite the playbook on how we're going to lease or no lease. They were offering no lease. And that's how they're running their current operations on the Wind River Reservation. They talked to them. They're operating without a lease. That is a drastic change on how we do business. So we kicked that around. And also, there was other, OCSH two is another effort to try to get marginal production going in that we get a bigger slice for our shareholders in this activity going on in the reservation. We pursued that hard in Minerals Four. But my view on the TEDC grant was it was flavored with both OCSH two and M I three, that we look at the grant, and it's called a tribal economic development. It's not, it's not a scientific thing like the lithium grant would be. It's totally economic development and putting laws together so you can implement it and make it work. After battling in Mineral Council Four, M I three went to the wayside for ninety-three million barrels of oil. You could stack ninety-three million barrels end to end and get almost a tots one after another. Going on Highway ninety-nine down to Cleveland, almost to Sand Springs. That's how many barrels of oil we're talking. We sent it over to the side. We said, we're not going to do it. Same with, that's huge to me. That's ten billion dollars. We just said no. I get it. It's politics. My ultimate assessment in Mineral Council Four is the shareholders aren't ready. They would rather just play by the rulebook, put things through the B I A as, as always, and let's proceed only and limit our risk, limit our risk, and get our return, just like we always do. That was shouted out to me in the politics. I had my own town hall. I tried to describe this stuff. You know, I thought it would benefit, but it was back to me, they are not ready. I think it's just, in that vein, the T E C grant was written, and I've read it, and I understand the economic kind of flavor of the TEDC grant. It is to go in to rewrite law. It is to go in to create your own code, and, and that's what it's doing. We're not ready as a shareholder, in my view. I'm one of eight. So with that being said, OCSH two is another. That being said, I'd be in favor of that we go ahead and say, this grant, we just reject the grant and send it over to the nation and let them develop it. There is a law in place by, I think the sponsor was Rare Wythmore. Anything the nation does with the mineral estate, they have to get an approval by us. So with that law there and the flavor of this law, I think they can go ahead and use this grant for anything else other than minerals. And I think there's a big playing field for them to pursue it. So they can use the money. We can protect our ability to go after more money. We won't have to deal with the time issue that we've been kind of letting this thing go and go. And I understand that. We need to talk about, I think the team did a great job. And I've heard Mr. Shaffler say, probably this is the third time you're saying you're okay with sending it over. So I think it's just a time that we just make the motion and we send it over to the nation. So that's what I'm prepared to do. I'll make a motion that we not utilize the grant as a mineral council and send it over to the, the OCSH nation.
I have a motion on the floor. Counsel, I need a second.
Second.
Second. I have a second. I think the consideration is correct. Second chair, discussion.
Thank you, Chairman. I worked with, about a year ago, when the fifth mineral council came in, I called Candy, called her up, and I said, we would apply for a loan from the United States Department of Energy. And, and I want to work with you. And I don't know any of my grants. You, you know a lot of my grants. I know. I said, we need help and apply for this grant. I applied for this loan. And we applied for it, and Councilman Redcorn went with us. Paul Beemore, you know, Paul, and he was the utility man. He replied, and I said, y'all, I'll take advantage of it. It's a lot, there's a lot of money in the United States, you know. It's okay, listen. But my point is, we, we worked with Candy. We worked with her. She's the head of the government operations or something, whatever.
Self-governance.
Self-governance. Well, she came over, she got her, got her people together. They came over, we had a little meeting. We worked together. That's not going. And I think just what Councilman Redcorn was saying, you know, we're in the dark about this, and they're, they're, that's on their side. They have their people over there working the green, you know, there. And we, we're over here, we're in the dark, you know. We don't know what they're thinking. We don't know what, I still go with half that grants, but I, I read most of it. The one that the park was changed, I didn't read. I'll be honest with you. What Councilman Rebar is telling me, it doesn't sound good. It sounds negative. It sounded more, there's more minuses. I always go with the pluses and minuses. There's more minuses than pluses. Minuses are up here, and pluses are down here, about halfway. But my suggestion too, just like Councilman, I got five minutes. But Councilman Redcorn said. I suggested, get her, get her team, you know, you know who they are, get her team, have them come over, explain this to us. And they're the grant expert. You're the grant expert, right? Bring them over here and sit them at the table and say, okay, here's what, what you all don't like. Do we omit it, or do we follow the grant? And that, that would really help. Don't you think it would help? I think it would. Sitting at the table, we're all sitting at this table. It's like a notch of the round table. We're all sitting here. And we, there's some of us disagree, some of us agree, right? But, but some of us are in the dark about what the minuses are up here and the pluses. In other words, there's confusion, right? There's confusion. There's miscommunication. One woman. What, what I suggest too is that we, just like you say, I would like to have them come over before we vote on anything. And then so let them sit down, tell what, what, what they're doing wrong, what we're doing wrong, what they're saying wrong, what we're saying, or what they're saying right and what we're saying. In other words, discuss it. And then we'll know exactly where we stand, right, Chairman?
Yes. We have a motion, Jim. I'm saying yes for five minutes.
But, but when we get to that point, then we vote.
We have a motion on the floor. I think the time is now.
Call for a question.
I have to, I'll go with the second real quick.
Hold on, sorry. Candy was here. We had, there was a meeting several months ago. I believe Walworth's come in. And there was a couple of council members here. My understanding that's they were going to express, explain the nuts and bolts of what this is going to do, what couldn't do. All those things like that, the meeting, then it turned out like it should have. It was pretty disruptive. It was gross and levelers. There was a lot of back and forth and it's got to the point where nothing productive was coming out of it. And so that meeting, the plug was pulled on that meeting. That was the first opportunity for them to discuss what was going on. And that was, and I was happy they're here because I, at the time, I'd read it. And I obviously wasn't on Council Four. I said, but you know, there were people that were there. And, and so we were having the opportunity to say, all right, this, you know, it was, it was written this way, and here's, here's what the grant says it's going to be doing, and you can do with your money. And we never really got to cross that bridge and ask the kind of questions we wanted to ask for Walworth's and kind of thing like that. And so from that point on, it's just been kind of a disconnect, you know. And so two months later, you know, and all of a sudden we're wanting to sit down and have this back and forth, back and forth. The time for that was a month and a half, two months ago, you know, and, and whatever, we worked with the grants. But a lot of times, I mean, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. There's a lot of preamble. You just want to sit down, start doing stuff, you know, you have to put the right people in the right places. You have to start doing certain things, you know, I mean. Again, you have a logic model. You determine what needs to be done. You do it, you see what the outcomes are going to be. You come back, you do an assessment. You have an evaluator. If you have technical assistance, people from Colorado, wherever, you know, Colorado, they come back, you know what? You go this way, and you get people in Massachusetts that are part of this deal. So I mean, these people are all sitting on go, and it's been kind of contingent upon whether or not this body wants to take this initiative on. And it's apparent that we really don't. Now, it seems like, well, maybe we can do something. Maybe we can change the scope, just do like that. I mean, that would have been fine, but I think right now, I think so much time has passed. I think it's, 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 it's going to be an uphill climb, and I think the Candy, the chief in his office is ready to tackle this. It's like Mr. Redcorn talked about, anything and everything that goes through that T E D C that has to do with minerals can come back before this body, and we can, you know, well before we vote against it. And so I'm, I'm okay with that. And at the same time, we're not really, it's not really a setback. It's just the ability, we're going to have to go back to the council, go into the Congress and ask him for money to do certain things that this grant could do. And even more so, we don't have to follow this, this grant itself. We could come up with our own, like Mike was talking about. If we want to sit down alone ourselves and figure out a way, moving forward, that we, how we want to do some things, then that's what we'll do. But we got, but we got, but we got to sit down and do this stuff, and again, that brings the committee structure back into order. Sitting here trying to cover things in the fifteen, twenty, five minutes at a time. We got to come back in here on Saturday and hammer things out all day and do certain things like that. So there's work to be done. But that's not happening. So until that kind of stuff starts happening, this is going to be the playbook and how to do stuff. And oftentimes, we don't get enough time to do the work we need to do. So, thank you.
Thank you. We have the call for the question. I do want just some housekeeping that I think this resolution, Candy, this is where we would say that we are not going to accept the award letter, and we would like to have the nation discuss that. Can we keep that, that preview? Because I don't want to say we're not going to take a grant ever. Is that fine with you? Lacy, do you see what I'm talking about? The award letter, we were, we are not accepting it, and it goes to the nation. How can we word that the politest?
That's what I said. I said, we're not accepting the grant, and we're turning it over to the nation.
That, 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 read that back for clarity, because I'm going to have to vote for it.
Not utilize the T E D C grant and send it back to the nation.
Will that work?
Can you repeat that?
You can say you're declining to participate and turn it back to the nation.
Well, I don't want to put the declining to participate. That just cuts me completely out.
Call for a question, Chairman.
Repeat it, and then we'll call for it.
Not utilize the T E D C grant and send it back to the nation.
At this time. Call for the question.
Councilwoman Curry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Curry?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair, Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
No.
Councilman Chappellford?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
No.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Counsel. With that, I'd like to move on down to the producer of the year on our, under our business. Lacy, are we needing to have any input at this time? I would rather not do it publicly. Until the council, do you have any recommendations for us to handle that?
That's what you guys, you guys can do by, you can submit your, who you say to me, and then I can have this.
I would like to do that at this time. Counsel, please get back with Chief of Staff Reynolds and over the producer of the year. With that, I'd like to move on down to agenda, go to item number, oh, excuse me, Councilman Redcorn.
On the producer of the year.
Yes, sir.
In the past and present, I've kind of checked out Short. And they're one of the bigger producers. We never see them here. Which I think that might be a good thing.
It was a producer of the year two years ago.
Oh, he was? Okay. Well, I'd like to consider that. I've been here, another company, which I think they're both good, but I just want to say Short has, like I said, been one of the biggest, if not one of the second biggest in the account on the reservation. And I'd like to consider them as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We'll have that to Lacy.
Is there any way possible that we can do a resolution so that we can purchase a plaque?
I would like to make a motion to allow the council to have the availability to purchase the plaque ahead of our summit with the producer of the year, TBA.
Second.
Any discussion, Counsel? Call for the question, dear.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair, Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chappellford?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Councilwoman Curry?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Councilman Redcorn, are you done? I'm going to go to Second Chair. Thank you, sir.
I missed a part. Thank you, Chairman. I missed a part about the producer of the year. There's not one picked at this time.
No, that's why the to be announced is available on this resolution, which we voted on.
So everybody has to put in their names.
Yes, sir.
Gotcha.
Chief of Staff. And it's fine to make them public, because these are folks that are helping take care of our shareholders. And I will give you a little hint. They used to live up there, by who you're talking about. And we got no finer group out there doing business. We have representatives here with us today that function in the same environment. I want to give you guys a little thought on that. We know where our livestock comes from. We know that. We appreciate it. And that should go out there. With that being said, Lacy, will that take care of the plaque?
Wait a second.
No, no, no. If anyone's going to be my producer of the year, it's going to be someone out here at the field.
He was.
You're just moving to Hollywood. I already know that. Being her, sitting there kind of upset about it.
It's all right.
That's okay.
He walked my realtor out there.
Oh, good one. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Got a little comment.
Thank you, my second.
About a month ago, I got five minutes. About a month ago, I heard on radio, I think Bill and I heard the same thing, y'all. City Barderville is in dire need of water. They're big time. You can go, you can go down the road, you look at those streams, they're pretty dry. They're dry.
They're down.
They're already getting close to rationing. I think if you go over so many thousands of barrels, or thousands of gallons of water at your household, price goes up. And if you go over a hundred thousand gallons, price goes up. You know, that's how desperate they are. Now, they're also thinking, they're making a piece, they're building a study, which is, that grants are, that's all they are, studies. Do you agree or not?
Well, it varies.
It's looking to the future, huh?
Well, I mean, they're addressing problems that should be identified, and they're making money available so you can address those disparities and come out, cause the outcomes, a lot of times, it doesn't always work like that.
This is true. That's what I want to hear. Anyway, they're doing a study. And the first place they look, guess where they look?
Next to the casino.
They, they, back on the second mineral council, y'all weren't on there. I, my first time being myself. They wanted to build a lake out here around Okeechobee. And they came pretty, pretty darn close to doing it. And we voted it down. We were against it. Now, we need to keep this in line again, and this is serious now. What if they want to, they're thinking about the off, or is that off? Or they're thinking about getting pipeline going underneath our mineral estate, taking our water back to Barderville, and the heck with us. They don't care. When it gets to that point, they don't care. They need water. There's, how many, how many people in Barderville place?
Thirty-five thousand.
At least thirty-five, maybe more than that, by now. Mexico is bringing them in by the thousand. Maybe probably more than that. And they need water. So, and then my niece, you know, Mary, she emailed me, the Chickasaw Nation, they ran against us, they were saying, oh, um, years ago, and they won. And she emailed, emailed me, the lawyer that they, that they talked with, that they talked to all the churches, all the churches, they're all, they're all good. Those five tribes, believe me, what I've heard, they stayed together all the time against the state law. And they won that, they won that case. So if y'all, if y'all think about this, just put it in your minds, you know, if they come to, what if they make a resolution and say it passes? Okay, we're going underneath Osage County. We're going to take all your, our loose, uh, off of there. What do we do then? How do we stop them? We probably have to go to court, federal court. And this is federal land, as you all know. So it's something to think about. And it's very serious when it comes to water. There's a lot of different dishes of water. I, I think it's a mineral set. There's a lot of debate about it. But one thing about it's very important, you know, we all need water. And they do too. You elect, probably not.
It's done. Well, the only thing is, we haven't had enough rain. And I did a service up in Kansas. They're dead. They're selling their cows. My hay has went through their roof now. With that being said, I do want to interject. Does that?
Take care of that?
We have a situation that I want to add into that. I heard the same thing from the Bardistville development. But we already had the same process happen to us over there with the nation and Enid Pipeline. So we need to review that specifics, because the other is navigable waterways through the Corps of Engineers on the Arkansas River. I don't care what the Corps says. Until they paid us for storage, like I forced them to at Sky Duke, which they paid pennies on the billions for that, Bardistville will turn right around and start doing contracts, making money off of it. Same way, Enid's going to supply themselves. With that being said, thank you, Second Chair. I would like to have that information, but I'd also like to have a copy of that Chickasaw battle in Red River. We got it. Sean, is there anything we'd like to add? I'd like to go ahead. Yes, Counsel.
I just, I was going to put a minute, I'd.
Yes, sir, please.
Make a motion, make an approval, minutes.
Second.
Do the second political position unable to get them completed in time?
No, they're not available in front of us.
Oh, they were sent though, weren't they?
No one?
I must have read some.
You actually kept up with your mail, that's good.
Takes me about two, three AM.
Thank you, Second. Would you possibly be all right with table in that motion?
Yes, sir.
With that being gone, I entertain motion adjourned. Second, I have a motion on the floor, my Councilman Redcorn, second, and my Councilman Chappellford. Call for the question, please. Call for that question. It doesn't matter.
Second Chair, Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chappellford? Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse? Councilman Big Horse?
Motion adjourned, run.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Before I hit the gavel, I'd like to say one thing. You get ready for the new world we're going to live after this weekend. We're going to have a movie come out in thirty-five thousand areas, forty-three countries, and it's all going to identify what happened to our people. I do not want to lose the fact of Hollywood on one process. They take the money and they go home. We are all going to live here for the rest of our lives. I want to speak about the hundreds of families who had loved ones lost. We are not going to lose that. They're going to come right back to us, and they're going to ask us how this happened. It happened because of greed, corruption, and now we got that. We've got to look at how are we going to protect our children from this story coming into their lives. With that, I've asked that all of you pray for your families. Pray for all of us. We need that other permission from our Lord, so we know that that's not coming back to us. And while I will say this much, is that I appreciate all of my council has done in participation. You're going to take arrows in the back from this. You're going to take arrows in the front. But you remember that we had to have this story told. That's a good one, because we got to stay strong. And with that being said, I'm. Yes, sir.
Just got a call from Councilman Tishwalla, and he's in the hospital.
Time couldn't be any better.
My wife's truck was out there, so I'm heading over to get him.
Yes, sir.
Get him home.
I'm going to ask for a, say a short prayer for my brother, Shunka. Joseph Tishwalla. I ask that you think about his endosse, I mean, I want to hear that he had the greatest folks in the world. They have come through many things together. He lost his brother. He's over in the hospital now, Lord. I ask you, do you take your divine hand and carry my brother back home? Let him have some help with his feelings. I have struggled, we have struggled, and we ask that you allow him the strength to take care of him. I ask for blessings upon Sister Debbie. Take care of my brother. I want to ask his, in Jesus Christ's name, I pray.